I'd like to call the meeting of the Mint Hill Planning Board, January 23rd, 2023. It's now 6:30. We'll call it to order. I ask everybody to please silence your phones during the meeting time. Roll call, we've got a quorum. We've got most people here. Can I get an approval of the minutes of the November 21st regular meeting?
Motion to approve.
Second?
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any go? Alright, it passes. Roger, can I get you to do the invocation?
Yes. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, Lord, thank you for this day that we can come together, Lord, and we just pray for discernment as we deal with the issues of our town and of our citizenship. And we just also lift up our emergency workers, Lord, for their safety and protection. And we also lift up our military and their families, current and former, and we just pray that you be with them, hold them close. In the name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Roger. Any additions or deletions of the agenda items? Reports? Any reports, John?
No, sir.
Nothing? No old business, so we'll get right into the new business. Discussion and recommendation of ZC 22-6 filed by EPCON Communities to request a rezoning from R to RCZD and BG to allow a single-family subdivision for the property located at 8612 Fairview Road, tax parcel number 197-201-14.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Bridgette Grant. I'm a land use consultant with Moore and Van Allen. I'm pleased to be here tonight before you on behalf of EPCON Communities. My role as a land use consultant is that I'm not part of the development team. I'm here to help the development team navigate through this conditional zoning process and hopefully a great outcome for all parties involved. So with that, I'm going to give a brief overview of the site and then we're happy to answer any questions. The site's a 32.84 acre site located at Fairview Road and Quail Park Drive. It's under the existing zoning and future land use plan identified as mixed residential, and mixed residential is intended to provide that variety of housing types, not necessarily an increase in density. We originally came before the Board of Commissioners with a proposal for 67 units of age-restricted senior housing on single-family lots that also provided a 2.78 acre dedication of land at the front of the site for the municipality to use in whatever capacity we wanted to with the BG zoning. Ultimately, after some initial feedback, we reduced the total number of units to 66 units to get us to that two dwelling units per acre layout. This overall plan commits to a max of 66 units that are age-restricted. It commits to that dedication of 2.78 acres of BG-zoned land along Fairview, which falls in line with the recently adopted land use policy, and it reserves that additional right-of-way for the parallel road to Fairview that was also identified in the small area plan. We're providing all of our access off of Quail Park Drive. Again, we align with the recently adopted land use plan and the small area plan and the anticipated road infrastructure. When you look at all of this in summary, we are attempting and seeking to develop a site that, again, has age-restricted, 55 and older, and that's included in the deed restrictions, which means it's not just age-targeted, it's absolutely a restricted community. The age-restricted communities, as we all know, generate less traffic than traditional family neighborhood communities. The age-restricted communities have less impact on schools. 60% of the homes sold in our first courtyard Mint Hill project were all existing Mint Hill residents. The first community also sold in six weeks, which gives you an idea of how high the demand is for this type of housing in this community. It's consistent with the housing needs for the area, provides housing that's walkable to the nearby park. It dedicates that land so that the town has the ability to set the tone for how that corridor develops. It reserves the right-of-way and provides sidewalks along all of the site's frontage. We always hear about traffic. Anytime we're looking at a development, it's a matter of traffic. And I think it's important to understand, we, as a vacant site, we're not generating any traffic. If you were to develop the site under the existing zoning without the conditional zoning, you are still zoned for R residential. The difference is that we're seeking some smaller lots, which gives us the ability to provide more open space. So if you develop this by right versus the age-restricted, age-restricted is generating 39% daily trips than a traditional neighborhood overall throughout the entire day. It generates 44% less peak morning trips, that's that period of time in the morning that's typical rush hour, and 52% less peak evening trips. And again, that's typically because age-restricted residents don't have to come and go during the traditional business hours if they don't want to. There's flexibility in what their peak hours are. The courtyards at Quail Park is going to be a quality community that's catered to the residents that want to live here. You'll see high-quality homes, amenities, both interior and exterior, that are accustomed to senior age-targeted living. This is an aerial perspective that just shows you what the homes look like with a signature courtyard in the back. That's the private open space that's included on every single lot. Just getting back to that idea of existing zoning versus proposed zoning, this is set up into two columns. The left-hand side shows you R residential, that's what we're zoned for. The right-hand side shows you RCZ, the residential conditional. So under the existing zoning, a developer could come out and probably at the highest potential, develop 1.5 to 2 units per acre based on that 20,000 square foot lot for a max of 66 lots. With that, we know that you'd have higher traffic impacts and there would absolutely be school impacts. Conversely, when you support the conditional zoning, you're getting the same number of lots, but you get smaller lots with increased open space and all those commitments that we talked about that become conditions of the plan, that it's age-restricted, that 2.78 acres is dedicated or donated to the town, that new street reservation, certain deal with the development's going to look like, decreased traffic, no school impacts. We've also added that we'll provide a crosswalk from our site directly over to the park so someone doesn't have to walk all the way up to Fairview. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Chip, we start with you.
Yes, thank you for your presentation. Just for clarity, you've got two entrance points and one stub road? Is that what it looks like on here?
That's correct.
Okay. From a standpoint of homeowners association, will that be established by you guys and taken over by the community at a certain capacity?
It is. The community is operated with the homeowners association. At what point do you?
98%.
98%. It gets turned over.
And that's a mandatory HOA?
This is Ken Cardos with EPCON, and I apologize, I didn't introduce you on the front side.
That's all I got right now.
Tom, I don't think I have anything right now.
Roger? Yes, very good presentation. Looks nice. I do have a couple concerns. And first, on the retention pond, because that's going to be a wet pond, correct?
Correct.
Going to hold water. Is there fencing around it, or is there anything, safety-wise? We've kind of seen this situation before.
Can we get you up to the microphone and give us your name again, please?
Yeah. My name's Ken Cardos. I'm the regional president for EPCON Charlotte Division.
Thank you.
We haven't identified a fence to go around the pond at this point, but is that something you've done?
We have done some aluminum fencing around ponds if necessary. The thing to take into account is because our homes use side yard courtyards as the homeowner's outdoor living space, the backs of our homes are all fenced from one home to the other. So there typically is not any pedestrian traffic back behind our residential homes. Each homeowner is using their side courtyard for their outdoor entertainment.
So you're saying the lot itself behind the house is fenced in on each lot?
Yeah. Can you pull up the...
My concern is just a safety concern with a pond.
Yeah, we'll go ahead and pull up the...
So we'll have fences here, right, Ken?
Yeah.
The fencing goes all the way along.
Can you go back to the courtyard picture? Right there. If you notice, along the backs of our homes, from one home to the other, there's fencing there to go ahead and keep everything within the courtyard. Typically, behind our homes, that's all what we consider passive space. Homeowners are not allowed to put anything behind their homes. They can't have swings or anything of that nature. So rarely would anyone have the need to be back behind there. Typically, everything's screened off from one home to the other.
I was just looking at the age requirement and grandchildren. I got...
Yeah, and that's why we...
...some of my own and...
And that's why we do fence that off, yeah.
And, you know, the proximity to the park, you know, is another issue. You know, my concern about a wet, a wet, you know, pond. Pond is holding water, you know. I just have a concern about a safety issue around the pond. But, and I would ask that you consider it, okay? Because I think it's, you know, it's close to everything as is and the park is so heavily used by children. And there is an access point to the pond, to the community, so I just have a concern about that.
It's something that we can take into account.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, my other issue too is DOT. I don't see any type of a DOT report in here. And as far as how this, you know, our road is already pretty busy right there. And, you know, access, you know, in and out for this situation, for this, you know, I'm not against a development by any imagination. I'm just concerned about us not being able to see what the decision or what a DOT setup is going to look like, what DOT is going to require. Because I have a, you know, sometimes I get very concerned about approving something and then, or not approving something, but then it could change, you know, while it was approved, and then the whole outlook changes because something DOT required.
I appreciate that comment, and I'm accustomed to those late comments. And so thankfully, we were able to get feedback from NC DOT. Their preliminary response is that they would like us to provide, it's basically a right-hand deceleration lane on Fairview turning into Quail Park Drive, which basically allows traffic to keep moving freely on Fairview without causing delay for anyone making a turn into Quail Park.
Okay, well, I'll... You say you have that already?
We do. We got that this afternoon, probably at 4:30.
And that decelerate lane would what, be there on the...
It would be...
Initial part?
I don't know. Can you see my cursor on the screen? It would be here.
Fronting the commercial.
Fronting the commercial. So when you're coming down Fairview, we would have a deceleration lane, which is its own dedicated turn lane, so that you could turn onto Quail Park Drive without slowing down. And that's really what typically the concern is, that they want traffic to keep moving freely through the area to avoid any conflict with people turning into the community. And so that's the request that NC DOT has made.
And you said that's their initial, how did you put that?
They gave us their first comment today and said...
First comment?
They always reserve the right. They always reserve the right.
Yeah, until it's in writing, until it's in...
It is in writing. They gave it to us in writing. That was their comment, but it's NC DOT, so they always have the right to come back for more. And we will do whatever is required by NC DOT.
I'm sure you will. I just, from the Mint Hill standpoint, it's good to see the whole project, so you know what it's going to end up like.
Yes.
Versus what might end up. That's my only concern, because we've been doing this a while, and it's changed several times. But that's all I have right now. Mr. Chairman?
Kenny?
No, it's a very good presentation, and I don't really see anything needs commenting.
Eric?
Yeah, just a couple of questions. First question, what price point are y'all bringing the homes to market on?
Prices out here will start in the upper fours, base price, and run into the upper fives. Actually, we're looking at introducing a larger product that would probably be in the mid-sixes from a base price starting point.
And these are all ranch-style, one-story homes?
We do offer a bonus room above the garage, but yeah, it's considered a ranch product.
And then, can you speak to me a little bit about the buffer along Quail Park Drive? I mean, would it be like a fully planted buffer, or just the backs of the homes with a fence between the courtyards?
You're referring to the frontage ridge along Quail Park?
Yeah.
Yeah. We would go ahead and typically have some type of mounding in there and heavy landscaping. I don't know if you're familiar with, we have another existing community just within a couple miles of this proposed community that would show you that type of landscape buffer. Typically, we do try to focus on the aesthetics of the community as you're, you know, coming into what we consider the marketing window. So it would be heavily landscaped and have that type of buffer.
That's all I got right now, Chairman.
Okay. Couple of questions. The, which end is it? I guess it's the south end is very heavily wooded, right, of this property, right before you get to the creek area? I mean, are you going to have to clear a lot of that? Are you going to try to leave a lot of that, or what's going to happen there?
We should not have to do a lot of clearing. I mean, obviously, we're going to have to clear enough to go ahead and create the dam embankment for the stormwater management pond. But we would go ahead and minimize any impact to that natural area.
Yeah, we don't have a tree ordinance, unfortunately, but, you know, we depend on the developers and the builders to do as much as they can to preserve the trees in this area. So as much as you can do, we would really appreciate that.
Yeah, absolutely. And we really do try to do that in all our communities. I would encourage, you know, all of you to go out and take a look at some of our existing communities. I think they show, you know, very well compared to most builders out there.
Good. All right. Back to the DOT. You know, I have a concern of the turning in, but I also have a concern of turning left out of there. You know, getting out of the park, we've got a light down there, but getting, turning left out of here, these people are going to be 55 and older, which to me, 55 is very young, but they, you know, getting out of there, I have a concern we're developing a crash area right there. And I don't know what else to do about it. I mean, if, you know, to me, and people don't like them, but to put a median in there so you couldn't get across, you had to go down and make a U-turn at the light, would be a whole lot safer than trying to risk coming, because people are coming around that turn right there, right when you get to that, to come out of that. So, you know, I was hoping DOT might do a little bit more, I guess, is where I'm at with that.
I appreciate your comment that 55 is young. And I will also say, you know, I mean, some people prefer the full movement. They want the ability to be able to break through. If there was a meet during less peak times, right, when traffic is down and lower, they want the ability to be able to make that turn. So I think that's something that we can still explore with NC DOT. I think that U-turn movement has become more common as all of the communities are growing.
Yeah, you see it a lot. You see a whole lot down in the Union County area. Does our police, do they ever look at these things, John? Is that something they could look at and say, wow, we would kind of recommend something too? I mean, something we could push DOT with?
I haven't known them to do that.
Yeah.
NC DOT usually controls.
Yeah, unfortunately. Okay. Back to the fence area around the pond. Yeah, I have a concern, as I'm sure a lot of others on the board here do. You know, I was a kid once, and if that pond was there, I was going to be, if it had water in it, I would be over there with a fishing rod. I don't care unless you had security running me out. And then that became a game. But, you know, so I do, I think, to me, being as close to the park and stuff, I'm thinking a fence is something that probably, from a safety standpoint, maybe a requirement.
Do you think that, again, I'm trying to show my cursor, specifically this frontage. I mean, I find that a lot of the residents will definitely take ownership of making sure people who are obviously not supposed to be in the 55 and older community aren't there. But I think where there's a public street frontage, would that suffice to make sure that from the public street, what you're really experiencing here, it's not visible for them, that it's accessible at any point?
These kids nowadays have these phones, and they have everything on them, and they know exactly. I mean, I've got friends who have ponds, and they are constantly running people out of there. And it's not the people fishing that bother me. It's a young kid that gets in there and gets themselves in trouble or something. So, you know, we've got a lot of these dry basins, not so bad, but a basin that's going to carry water, I guess, almost all the time, right? It's a pond, basically, is it not?
Yeah, typically, it is designed as an amenity to the community. You know, so we do like to, you know, to keep it wet, and often we'll have a fountain or something of that nature in there for that purpose.
Would you be willing to put a fence in there? Some type of rod-on fence or something, just to try to keep people, an extra set, an extra piece of security to keep people out?
We could definitely take a look at putting up like a aluminum four-foot, you know, rod-on type fence around the outside perimeter of the pond. The question is, you know, would you be, you know, comfortable just tying that back into one of the backyard fenceings rather than having to fence the...
Whole back section?
The front side of the pond where it's backing the lots. So basically, we would do, you know, a U-shape connecting from the back of our fences on one of the units on the outside of the pond.
Yeah, I think that would make sense, you guys. Yeah, I think that would make sense.
Okay. I think that's something we could do.
Okay, thank you. Can you talk about your amenity area? What are we looking at in there?
It's a great tag team.
For the amenities, typically, we have a clubhouse that has an exercise room. There's tables in there for the HOAs to create different committees, to play cards and, you know, things of that nature. There would be a swimming pool. There would be a pickleball court. That's, you know, typically what we would put in a community of this size.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, I think that's it. Anybody else? Want to go back around? Anybody?
When do you think y'all will have some type of notification, some type of concrete plan from DOT?
I would expect that the comment that they've given us today is the comment that we're going to expect to have until we're actually going to construction drawings. I mean, John, has that historically been the way they've handled this?
Yeah, I mean, to answer your question, when do you know for sure when they sign off on the plans? And so that's, you know...
But when do they generally sign off on the plans?
I mean, they're at the end, whenever all the permits are...
Yeah, it's part of the final CD process.
Yeah, construction drawing. So past any approvals we get for zoning, and once we get into construction drawings, then they take another opportunity to provide some feedback. That's the case on every plan.
Yeah. Yeah, I just have a real issue with not being able to see how traffic is going to be handled. And I understand DOT gets to make the decision, not trying to make the decision for them. My concern is just this planning board not being able to see what that is, okay? Seeing what the plan is, because that is a very, right in a curve, right in, you know, left turn's going to be an issue. That's just a, that's just a real busy area. In the summertime, it's extremely busy. And I just, I just have a problem supporting that without knowing what the traffic pattern is going to be. And...
Do you have any idea how long that turn lane will be?
At least 100 feet. I mean, that is...
Is that a requirement?
Yes. It's a 100-foot decel lane, that's a requirement. We know that. We know that when I asked about a potential for a traffic signal, there would not be a traffic signal. There was nothing else that would give me any indication that there would be something substantive that would change how traffic would flow or operate in this area. In terms of their recommendation.
Left turn's going to be tough out of there. For you, for me, anybody.
Yeah, left turn coming out.
Left turn's going to be tough out of there.
Yeah. I just hope people don't try it.
Oh, they will.
Oh. Anything else? Anybody got anything else? Hearing nothing else, I'll take a recommendation, and we'll add the fence into it. Can I get a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion 66th Lot Residential Development be approved on the condition that there's fence installed around the pond as you had suggested.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Any abstain? The ayes have it. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation. All right, moving on. Discussion and recommendation on ZC 22-7 filed by, I'm going to get it wrong, Lisharon Enterprises and Holdings to request a rezoning from RCZD to OACZD to allow construction of two commercial office buildings, property located at 7135 Lebanon Road, tax parcel number 13541747.
Evening.
Good evening.
My name is David Clausman. I'm with V3 Southeast on here behalf of the developer. As you mentioned, this is a parcel located just north of Lebanon Margaret Wallace intersection, just south of Lebanon Elementary School. Parcel itself is just over three acres. It's just, like I said, just north of the Cadence Senior Living, just kind of west of the elementary school. Existing site is existing 100% pretty much wooded. The proposed development has a, about a 7,200-ish square foot building that fronts Lebanon Road, and about a 10,000 square foot-ish building, would be kind of the phase-two building, kind of towards the back of the property, associated parking and stormwater management down in the bottom-left corner. As you mentioned, we're just requesting to change the zoning from residential to the OA zoning for the allowed use of this medical office building. These are conceptual renderings of other buildings this developer has constructed, similar use of what the building potentially would look like, which is some elevations. And as kind of the bulk of it, I'm open for any questions.
Start down there. Eric?
I don't have any questions this time.
Kenny?
No, sir. Going back to the DOT thing, has anybody talked to DOT?
I have. I actually talked with DOT this afternoon, and at a bare minimum, they will make us to a left turn lane into the site, and potentially, to be determined, maybe a right turn into the site. But that has not been determined. But again, at least a minimum, a left turn lane.
Has anybody evaluated the impacts, how far back that left turn lane is going to go into the intersection of Margaret Wallace and Lebanon?
Not completely. There's been some brief discussion in terms of how all three, there's the, obviously, the turn lane just north of us, and the one that goes into Morris Farms will have to be kind of worked into a three-lane cross-section, kind of per my conversation with DOT, but nothing has been kind of drafted up and set in stone. But that's roughly what they are looking for.
That's all I've got. I mean, I'm just saying that it appears if they're going to require the left turn lane, that's going to go back and impact that intersection.
Potentially. I can't comment on...
I think it's 45 mile posted speed there.
30.
I think it's 35, I believe.
So you got a 40, yeah.
45.
Yes, that's something we'll have to take a look at.
You good?
Yes, I'm good.
Yeah, that would be my only sticking point, too, is I'd like to know what DOT is going to do or require there, just to see how it plays out. If I think the project looks nice, I think that would be a good fit for right there. But that's all I would have on this one. Mr. Chairman?
Scott, anything?
No, I just agree with that. I see where you're cutting into Lebanon. Is there a possibility that that site could get reoriented and that turn could be pushed closer towards Lebanon and farther away from Margaret Wallace, or Lebanon School?
Um...
I know as it sits... I know as it sits currently, that's not possible.
I would, I'd have to check with DOT. Obviously, there's a driveway spacing between the parcel to the north of us and what we were proposing. Not to say that it's out of the question. I don't have a answer if that's a feasible alternative or not.
That would be my only comment. If we're worried about that Margaret Wallace intersection, to try and push it closer to the existing. That's it. That's my only comment.
I like the looks of this. How many units are in this complex?
The first building, as of right now, is supposed to be dentistry and orthodontist. I'm not sure how many, I guess, exam rooms they will have. The second building is to be determined and developer doesn't have a tenant as of yet. So just kind of whatever the market is up for at that particular time, he's ready to construct that second building.
Thank you. All right, so is David?
Yes.
All right, David and John both. All right, so how do we get an answer to this, John? How do we get people, or how do we get a presentation in here that tells us what we want to know about the project and the turn lanes? Like in this case, the turn, that seems to be, everybody's throwing it back on DOT and we're not going to have it till construction, et cetera, et cetera. But I've seen it on, most of them that come in here, at this stage, they've got, kind of, they've got it figured out. They've at least got the plan. They may not have the final say-so from DOT, but at least they've got the plan. Right now, we don't have a plan.
Yeah, I mean, I think it just depends on the level of detail you want. I mean, typically when someone comes here, they're telling you, generally speaking, we're going to have a left turn lane.
Right.
But if you guys want to see the specifics of the lane, the length of the lane, and how all that's going to fit within, right, that typically is going to come at a later stage. So that's going to, that would require some changes that we're going to have to make as far as how to get the applicant to get their plans to a certain level. And honestly, that's going to be a challenge to get them to that stage, because remember, they're now just asking for rezoning, just so they can see if they can do the project. Then they dig their heels in after approval here, then they start refining it and get to their construction details. So, but as far as getting NC DOT to just give you preliminary comments, I think that's fair and I can make sure.
And putting those preliminary comments on paper so we can kind of see what it is.
Yeah.
I mean, yeah, I understand. I guess we're not asking for construction detail and the final approval from DOT, but we want to take the fact that they've talked to DOT, they have, DOT has said, this is what you're going to need preliminarily. And I understand that. But in this case, I mean, we're only talking about what we're looking at. We're not looking at a decel lane, right?
No, sir.
Just, that's from DOT?
Their preliminary, kind of, again, taking a look at minimum left turn lane, potentially the right turn lane to the property, but they couldn't say for certain until they looked at the plans in further detail.
I mean, there are certain projects, some of these smaller projects like these, not so much, but there have been projects where the transportation component of it is so important and it's become a big issue with the public or whatnot. So for example, if it's a development that might generate a need for a signal. Now, in those situations, we do try to get a little bit more clarity from DOT because we know that that is an important part of the decision-making. But usually with sites like this and the one before, I mean, this is what we anticipate. Yeah, they're probably going to say a left turn lane and the other one, yeah, we pretty much anticipated there would be some, probably like a decel lane.
Right.
But other than that, I think other than bigger projects, where it's a little bit more complicated, we generally don't ask for full design or much detail. Now, with that said, we can. I mean, if that's a direction we want to go, we can certainly do it.
Yeah.
Well, I would just like to see if nothing else, like with the first applicant and possibly you do, if you have a letter from DOT, I think that should be part of the, part of the package.
Yeah.
To see, because it's, otherwise, it's just, here again, the layout, you know, the way I understand our job is, you know, is to protect the layout of this, of the wonderful community that we have, okay? And everything that we approve or have a favorable to move up to the board, you know, it all affects everybody else that already lives here. Not that we want to grow, but, you know, to do it strategically and to do it to where people can still commute and get to where they're going in a safe and timely manner, you know, is important. And if they can get in and out of these places. You know, I go to the dentist too, but you know, if you can get in and out of them and just how that's going to work, I just think that, you know, some type of a 10,000-foot view would be good. Because to me, then we're shoving things up to the Board of Commissioners, which is fine. They're very capable of that job, but it's half-baked.
Yeah.
Okay, you know, they've got, well, this is, might be what it's going to be. Okay, and, you know, and to me, that's not as, that's not as credible from us to send up to, well, well, this might work fine. We have no idea, you know, and I just, that just concerns me a little bit, not having a little bit more detail about what this is going to look like, you know, and where the rubber meets the road.
Yeah, let me just say this, John. You know, I think the, yeah, DOT is out there to do it, but they're not always right.
Yeah.
You know, there are times that you got to push them. You got to, yeah. You got to push them and you got to say, we don't accept that, you know, and, you know, make a stink, a greasy wheel type thing, but the squeaky wheel. But anyway, you know, it, what will, what will the, what will the Commissioners see? Same thing we're seeing?
Well, the, no, no, no. The Commissioners, they made a point to ask, specifically this one actually. One of the Commissioners in particular asked to see something from DOT. So by the time they get to that meeting, that definitely is going to be something that they have to show. Matter of fact, I think the Commissioner said it out loud, that he would not support it unless he saw that information.
So what information is he going to see? It's not going to be a final design?
No, no, no. What he'll do, I'm sure, for example, let's say that the comment he received today, he would just show a plan and show a little line, show a little left turn lane signal, and he would convey that information to the Commissioner and say, yeah, we're looking at a left turn lane.
Yeah. Well, yeah, I think, I really think, I mean, I don't think it has to be any more than that to what Roger said. It has to be DOT preliminarily says, we need a left turn lane, and it's shown on a schematic, you know, when it gets here. When we see it, I think that's what we want to see.
Yeah, and that's on me. That's something, no, I appreciate that and I can.
Come up here and slap your hammer.
Well, what I can do is, I mean, that's really just me preparing. I mean, they asked me, what do I need to go to the board? Okay, so that's just something that I can say, hey, not only do we need a comment or an email floating around that says a left turn lane, why don't you go ahead and throw that on the plan so they can see it? So that's something, I'll just make sure it's there, so you see it.
Because my feeling is, if we're presenting it to the Commissioners with a recommendation or, you know, a recommendation favorable or unfavorable, they should know this is what they presented to them and this is what they're giving us, you know, this is, this is what it's based on. So I really think that's, I think it's, I think it's a necessity.
Yeah, absolutely. For me to support it would be.
Yeah.
Yeah, and just to be clear, again, it's not going to be construction-level design, engineer draw, but it will be a left turn lane with a little, you'll see it.
It'll be something more than, oh, we got a letter.
Yeah.
You did, well, you didn't share it.
Yeah.
It'll be to whatever code is out there, and I don't know what those ordinances or codes are as far as the lengths and all that kind of stuff.
Yeah, now, that is a detail that sometimes will come later, but usually for a site like with this one, they may already have an idea of the length. But yeah, I think that's something that we can just put up there. If they have that information available, if they know, like, for example, the previous one.
Right.
Yeah, for 66, yeah, 100 foot is probably all we're going to need. So if you kind of know that, they can, they can add that information on the plan.
Well, and that's, and that's fine from my perspective, but to me, it's just, if we say a favorable, then we ship that up to the board, then at least if there is a piece in there included that this is the DOT's preliminary findings, and it said, this is, we approved it based on these preliminaries.
Yeah.
Okay, and then that, to me, gives us much more credibility than just saying, oh, yeah, we approved this. We got no idea what's going to happen on the road.
Yeah.
Okay, and then the Commissioners are, you know, they've got, they've got some, they've got some teeth in it if they've, if they've got something here based on this package. But to me, the packages, both the packages are light, okay, without something in there.
Okay.
So let me, let me make sure I understand, David. You've got an email or something from DOT saying that there'll be a preliminary, it looks like there'll be a left turn lane?
I don't have an email. I can get it. I had a phone call this afternoon with the reviewer. But I can definitely get kind of an email from him, kind of stating his, what his minimum requirement would be at this time. But until, as John mentioned, we get into, further into design, we won't know exactly lengths and tapers and all that stuff associated with it. But we can at least get something in writing of what they're high-level looking for.
I think at least, the minimum, and I'll leave it up to them to make the motion, but the minimum that we would require is something in writing, you know, our recommendation would be based on the fact that you've got something in writing, and in fact, you will put that on to a preliminary drawing that goes to the Commissioners.
I could do that.
Yeah, and from now on, John?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, can I get a motion?
I will make a motion, Mr. Chairman, on ZZ 22-7. I'll make a favorable motion pending the inclusion of a DOT report for the Commissioners to consider based on this project.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Chip's second. All right, any more discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstain? So your motion passes. All right, thank you.
I understand this wasn't pointed at your project. This is just in general, because more projects come. I just want to make sure we're doing our job when it goes up.
This happened to be the last one standing here, so I get it. It's fine. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anything else? Anybody got anything else? All right, any questions about, anything for John or any, we'll grill him enough, we beat him enough now. All right, can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Chip's second. All those in favor, aye? All right, thank you, gentlemen.